...land use and property layout and how we move toward the future. And state law that we are under right now, very thoughtfully acknowledged. It says that the Board of Selectmen has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, have them issue a report, which undoubtedly they have put a lot of research into, which our Planning and Zoning Commission always does, and report back to the Board of Selectmen, which then will have a public hearing. So, there's input already from another body in town, the most important bodies like Land Use Co., which is the Planning and Zoning Commission as they stand today. And there is, because of the public hearing requirements, certainly if planning and zoning have another requirement, there's multiple inputs for public, multiple avenues of public hearing. In addition, this ordinance is cumbersome and will interfere with the day-to-day operation of the town. We have multiple town meetings throughout the year to handle what most people would consider routine matters. Other towns may do things differently, they may have charges, and they have things that work for them. Our reality is, we have a surplus of fields, so we're always renting fields out to other bodies. We have a whole other building for the Royal Samuel St. Elementary School, which has numerous tenants that we're always dealing with. These are simply day-to-day, dealing with those tenants and negotiating with them is really more of a function of day-to-day government. This ordinance would get involved in that, and it would just make things more cumbersome. It'd be drawing people out for what most people would consider routine matters. Potential less needs, less orders, buyers and sellers will be reluctant to work with Easton because of the uncertainty. Easton will suffer financially in the long term. As I said, we have a lot of tenants, we have space that we continually need to rent out. And after negotiations, people have to know that they have to come to a town meeting. Some people may choose not to, which adds unpredictability to it. Some people may just choose not to deal with Easton again. In regard to this, the ordinance presented references acquisitions. Again, there's only one ordinance for this body now. It references acquisitions. The ordinance creates a redundant, cumbersome step, so this is as a practical matter. All meaningful acquisitions already go through the Board of Finance and are voted at the budget referendum, or perhaps another referendum if it's not much at an expense. Organizations such as ER9, which is Central Office, which includes our Board of Education, Eastern Historical Society, Eastern Country Daylight, Lieutenant, all these spaces in the town, this ordinance could adversely affect those groups. As even a negotiated agreement with the Board of Selectmen wouldn't guarantee a lease or lease renewal, which makes their planning very difficult. And none of the bodies which currently, organizations which currently lease space from the town had to go to a town meeting when they initially leased space from the town, and presumably they did not anticipate that they would have to go to a town meeting at some point in the future. The Parks and Recreation Commission leases fields, the facilities, the outside groups all the time. This ordinance could potentially interfere with that process. Even if the proposed ordinance does not bind today, and I'm told it might be close in some cases, it could bind in the future. And with Parks and Recreation, we have a process that works very well. They handle it in an administrative way. There's really no reason, there's really no benefit to town government to interrupt that or try to administer that at a different level, if it works now. And we have elections every two years. It's much more efficient for the towns to elect officials they believe will manage the town's real property holdings properly, rather than have a town meeting every time the town engages in a small property transaction. The ordinance actually conflicts with another town ordinance, 421-23, on the acceptance of roads. The town has given the duty of accepting roads to the Board of Selectmen. The proposed ordinance would, a simple reading of that would mean that would go to a town meeting. This one is interesting, because it used to be the case that the road acceptances happened at a town meeting. However, that was, the town meeting voted to transfer that power to the Board of Selectmen, presumably for the very reason we're discussing. The average town person was tired of coming out to town meetings for a simple matter as a road acceptance. So, in that case, it was actually transferred back to the Board of Selectmen. It's likely that this ordinance would lead to increased litigation for the town. Even in cases where the ordinance does not bind, it could be used as a basis for litigation. The town gets through it all the time for all sorts of reasons. For instance, someone could contend that ongoing annual rentals to, say, a soccer club actually constitute a multi-year lease and demand it go to a town meeting against two of the others. So, to close up, ultimately, as I did four years ago when this ordinance was defeated, I oppose this ordinance now. I believe it will lead to less efficient government, I believe it will lead to, almost certainly, the higher taxes down the line. My top there, the Board of Selectmen called this meeting, there was petition with a specific ordinance. The proponent had referenced a different ordinance. I'm not quite sure to make of that. I think it would be inappropriate to significantly change the ordinance that was called before the body tonight. I think it's unrealistic to expect people to be able to determine and understand a problem like this where a certain people are standing, to come to view on an entirely new ordinance, or if they hadn't had time to anticipate or think about it. But, in any case, I oppose the ordinance as presented, and I urge you also to oppose the ordinance and any amendment to the ordinance. Thanks.
How much time do we have? Do you have enough time? How many minutes do I have?
Seven and a half minutes.
You took seven and a half.
Thirteen left.
Okay. So, we're taking out your progress.
Thank you, I'm Slank Bob Lesler. I too oppose this ordinance and have modified very much for the same reasons that I opposed it when it came up four years ago. I share the concerns that Adam has articulated tonight, and I think he's absolutely right that this is going to create more problems than it's likely to solve. I'm not going to try not to repeat Adam's points in the interest of time. So, I'll focus on just a couple of things. The new ordinance has no minimum threshold. The statute sets a threshold of $10,000. So, if I understand correctly, the ordinance would require a town meeting for any transaction over $10,000. That suggests to me that it would be a lot of town meetings, because it's pretty low threshold. Town meetings are also generally not well attended. I've been to many town meetings in my 20-plus years of active in the town, and tonight's probably among the best attended, because there's a lot of interest in this ordinance. And what's really behind this ordinance, which I think is really our interest in what happens to South Park Avenue property. I'm told there are 250 chairs in this room, and there are certainly another 50 or more people standing. So, maybe we've got 350, maybe 400 people in the room. But we have 5,500, give or take, registered voters in town. We have, on the low side, about 700 who come out to some of the poorest attended votes, and upwards of 2,500 who will vote on municipal elections, and maybe as many as 4,000 who will vote on federal elections. That's a good cross-section and a good representation of the town. At a town meeting, even tonight's town meeting, I wonder whether there are very many people in this room who haven't made up their mind one way or the other of this ordinance. And so, I think town meetings are inherently subject to capture by an organized special interest group, pro or con. That's not how representative democracy should work. The Board of Selectmen, on the other hand, while we're not a perfect vehicle by any means, we are the one agency of government that is reflective of the will of least the 2,000 or 2,500 people who come out at municipal elections. We do think very long and very hard about what all the people of Easton might want when we deal with any issues, whether in South Park, or this ordinance, or anything else. And indeed, in thinking about future use in South Park Avenue, we have engaged in a listening campaign to make sure we understand what the possibilities are, and we've discarded many and have given some serious consideration to others. I'm not sure that the town meeting operates in that same fashion, because, as I said, clearly a lot of people done a lot of work tonight to get their partisans here tonight to speak. It's true that a town meeting could be adjourned with a machine vote, as Peter pointed out in his remarks. That will create and submit more government, certainly more expense and more burden on the town's meeting, and have to vote on whatever the question might be. And I submit that that would not be in the best interest of the town or most of the hanging questions we've become. I want to make sure I reserve time for questions from this side.
I do appreciate some of the people coming out here tonight, taking time and reading, but as has been pointed out, that is not always the cause of town meetings. It turned out for the last budget town meeting was a fraction of the number of people in this room. This ordinance, any way you look at it, will create more town meetings. It's not going to create less, it's not going to be the same number, it will create more. You argue that matters of interest draw people out to fill the room. And use tonight as an example as to the impact that some people feel and about particular issues, and they will come out. That may not always be the case, and basing the argument on the recent weakness on tonight's attendance is not objective. I spoke to a lot of people in the past few weeks since this first came up, and one common concern came up a number of times. They can't make it to town meetings, they can't make it to public hearings. Not because they're not interested, not because they're not involved, not because they're not concerned, but their schedules don't allow it. They can't get here whether it's work-related, childcare-related, activities-related, even though they may feel passionately about what is being discussed. Creating more town meetings would only make it more difficult for this number of people to fill this room for each of those. Those people that I talked to say, this is why we have elected officials, to make these decisions, that do not require everybody's direct involvement, do not require everybody coming out multiple times a year, every month, every other month, whatever the case they need. You may hear argument that we're talking about major land use issues, and that is a subjective statement, used to define what is a major issue. You set the threshold at $10,000. Somebody may feel that a major land use issue falls below that. That might be important to somebody else. If the goal of this ordinance is to allow more public participation in town land use decisions, I would argue that vehicle is already in place, has been outlined by Adam and Bob. We have hearings, public hearings with the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a request to allow people of the town to decide what happens to what is our most valuable asset. But as has been stated, and I don't want to repeat everything, it would cause disruption to how our town functions. We've talked about the number of leases that we have in town, and who uses those leases, and how they may be controlled to try to extend those if they know they have to go before a very select cross-section of the town, because not everybody can be in every town. That forced to have a financial impact on the town, and maybe those towns will go out there. Opposing this ordinance is not a vote to limit public participation in town, the mechanisms are there. Public participation is always warranted, is always welcome, and the vehicles are there for that. Opposing this ordinance is a vote that should be an efficient and effective operation for
Thank you. We'll now have the opportunity to hear from other members of this legislative body. Those interested in speaking, I ask you kindly line up in front of the microphone. Please keep your comments for three minutes. The clerk will contract your time and indicate when your lines are up. Is it end by yourself and take your time?
I'm Mike Carr, 75 High Middle Road. Pretty much a lifetime resident of Easton, and the town meeting here at Easton is us. I don't disagree with everything that's been said on the side that proposes us, but I will say that from a level of materiality, $10,000 seems to be de minimis when we're talking about a $45 million budget that we have here. So, what I would like to propose is an amendment to the ordinance, if that would be possible, and make it something so it's more material to the town, and that way, people in town can have a say in what goes on. $10,000, you can't buy a car for them. So, I would recommend that people consider an amendment of $200,000 and anything that's, you know, more than two years.
Are you making an amendment?
Yes.
If you choose to make an amendment, please do so in the form of telling us which words in the proposed ordinance will be deleted and which will be added. Do you need a copy of the amendment?
I do. Thank you. So, where it says fair value of less than $10,000, I would say fair market value of less than $200,000, in order to leases of duration of two years or less, or total lease payments totaling less than $200,000.
Okay, thank you. A motion has been made. Is there someone who would care to second that motion?
I second it.
Okay, we have two seconds to motion. Anybody would like to comment on the amendment that's now standing before this body before a vote is taken on the amendment? Is there a comment on this proposed amendment?
Yes, honor that one. I don't think the concept is unreasonable, but as Adam Dunst, I think, said earlier, you know, people came here with a particular proposal in mind, and I've been thinking about a proposal as written, and I don't want to think about this new proposal for just five minutes. So, I mean, you know, it's not crazy, but I think this is not the time to make a switch like that. So, that's why I'm not much for the amendment.
Any other comments on the amendment?
Sure, Christine, I mean, most of us who took to, paid a lot of attention to the feedback in the Selectmen, spent a lot of time addressing a lot of big concerns. Rewrote this, presented it to you, the Selectmen, at your meeting, and would like to propose another amendment tonight that speaks specifically to all of the issues that have been raised by our Selectmen. Here's the amendment, and this is what I would like to say.
Okay, I cannot make another amendment while the amendment still stands on the floor.
Wait, wait. I'm speaking to the amendment. I will not make the amendment at this moment, but I would speak to why I'm speaking against the amendment as currently stands. And that is, we have a state statute, everybody. State statute governs exactly what's going on in this town. It's law. And that state statute has parameters that require us to have a public hearing on the sale, lease, transfer of property, and it is specified in your handout. If you didn't get a handout, they're over there on the chairs. The state statute is at the top of this document that we prepared. Our proposal is to take that state statute as it stands, with all the parameters, as it stands, meeting requirements that the state requires us to do, only replacing the word "town meeting" for "public hearing." Nothing else changes, no other requirements are as those are tracked. Everything you currently do in town that requires a public hearing would require a town meeting. So, I am also not dissuaded of what my hope proposed, because I believe that the state statute, because of its application, and because we have had to, if we are required by law to use that law, is the rule that governs us, that a simple substitution of two words, "public hearing" to "town meeting," it eliminates all of the confusion that currently exists in the town among all of you. So, I am not in favor of that amendment, and I oppose it.
Would anyone else like to speak on the proposed amendment? Anyone else? I will call for a vote. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The amendment does not carry with it the unlined motion. Would you have a chance to speak?
Only by the majority.
Yes, but the way we're going to do this is everyone has one chance to speak, so we're just up next. We're free to make a line. As clerk Adam Carr, how much time to finish your comments?
Thirty seconds.
One second.
We'll let you go for two minutes. Very gracious, thank you. So, I think different people made some good points. What would happen in practice if this were passed? Actually, what you said about the minutes was great. It's $40 million budget and a $10,000 decision we have at a meeting. So, what would happen in practice? There are many people in this room tonight who attend some meetings but not others. Today, when a routine decision comes along, or Selectmen that you voted for make that decision. If this passes, and you're not able to make it to a meeting, like Christine was saying, if you're not able to make it to the meeting about renting out some property, then only the most passionate people, most enthusiastic people who come to many, many meetings, they'll attend and they'll make the decision for it. And these are people that you didn't vote for, and they may be very unmeaning, but they have passions and preferences that may differ from yours. So, if you want representative democracy, then let your representatives make the decisions. And the truth is that the pure democracy of a referendum, as Bob said, we've got 400 people here, we've got 5,500 voters, it's not a great representation. It's good in theory, it's not very practical. So, I encourage voting against this proposal. Thanks. Thank you. Anyone who would like to run is ready to address the moderator's question to the moderator through the moderator. Thank you.
Well, I'll turn myself just a little bit, because my comments are more directed to these people than they are to people outside.
Are you supposed to direct it to the moderator?
Okay, I'll direct it. Okay, I want to look here. I'm going to talk fast so I can get my three minutes.
Please do that.
My name is Sherri Harris, I live at 13 Mitchway. I've lived in Easton for 39 years. I served on the Republican Town Committee for 25, the Regional Board of Education for nine, and an old building committee in the 80s for nine. Land decisions will have more effect and character to this town than any other decisions we make. They are bigger than budget decisions. I believe that everybody here is in this room because they've been back. I'd like to speak to this from a little bit different position. It's not caring about land decisions that got us in this room tonight. The mechanism that brought us here is that we have a town meeting for a government. Not Board of Selectmen for a government, not representative campaign. Our Board of Selectmen do not represent us in the way that an RTM would give you a representative. You are now convened in a legally petition, town meeting, which is your branch of the government. This is a legal meeting. If you had an RTM, you'd probably have 10 or 11 people on that RTM. That's not what we have. We have a town meeting for a government. This town meeting is the legislative body of the town. You are the legislators of the town meeting. So, you are not here tonight voting just as a person, you're here voting as a legislator in your own town meeting. The Board of Selectmen convene us once a year if they're required to do our law, but citizens who are legislators in this body are empowered by state statute. State statute to convene this town meeting by petition when they believe of matters of importance have risen in the town. This is about the third time that's happened in eight years. Doesn't happen often because it's difficult. It took 85 approximately signatures on a petition to get here. If I held up a petition tonight for that ordinance, I'd ask somebody to go out and get those signatures. I don't think I'd have a rush to the front of the room. People don't do this lightly. And it's just the start of the work that citizens do to convene this legal body. This is part and parcel of our corporate government. And yet, for the last number of years, and with more vengeance tonight, our leaders insist on calling it, you know, fashions who came to cause trouble or to control the meeting, people who want something, extra work for the Board of Selectmen. And this is actually them pushing citizen legislators out of this convened legal body. You can wish for another town for a government, but this is what we have. This meeting is actually your meeting, it's not their meeting. This is your meeting, and it was called by fellow citizens who believe that three people, no matter how well-intentioned, should not be making this decision. So, I'm asking people tonight to speak from that point of view. You're not here to...
Is there a second?
Okay. You're not... Please support this ordinance and allow your legally convened body to make these decisions.
So, Mr. Herman, there, Ann Minaski, 20 more in glory.
Okay, and to be fair, you're going to put it back where it was, Ann.
Okay, you are the moderator. Yes. Oh, no, no, this is decorum. If I would, my son had confirmation practice at 7:00, so I did not get here early enough because I was going to ask the Selectmen to go sit, because our Selectmen and town meeting are the legislative body.
It's also, it's also the ruling of the moderator, to direct your comments to the asked matter that you made at this meeting.
And I am. So, I would like to make an amendment. So, the amendment for tonight's ordinance, as, thank you, Peter gave us all earlier in a brief slide presentation that announced, or, excuse me, met the questions of Board of Selectmen from their Board of Selectmen meeting, and I think also met the question of vote no, that was in the paper that you saw this week. So, the recommended amendment, "The town shall obtain approval of its legislative body, the town meeting, prior to any sale, lease, or transfer of real property that is subject to a public hearing, as outlined in Section 7, 163 E of the General Statutes of Connecticut."
Okay, thank you. To be clear, is your proposed amendment to strike the language that is in the warning as it was read, replace it with your language?
Yes.
Okay. And could you read that once more so that it goes clear, and see if anyone wants to second it?
Yes.
Thank you.
The town shall obtain approval of its legislative body, comma, the town meeting, comma, prior to any sale, comma, lease, or transfer of real town property that is subject to public hearing, as outlined in Section 7-163 E of the General Statutes of Connecticut.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a second. Would someone like to speak on behalf of the proposed amendment that is before us? Would you like to speak on the proposed amendment? Please come forward to do so.
Well, it's my turn.
Well, we're going to try to backtrack your events, and you're welcome to go back in line, and we can get one more set of chances.
Okay, so, first of all, I just want to clarify, so, the... Am I pronouncing it right? Sorry. Sorry. I believe the only difference to this amendment is the word "acquisition," because that's also taken up by state statute. We have to have a town meeting and a vote.